All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 16th, 2025 Commissioners Action Meeting. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been sent to the retrospect and posted on the Borough website, Borough social media, and posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall, and is being held in person and as well as via Zoom. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call. Commissioner Cole?
Present.
Commissioner Troy?
Present.
Commissioner Seidel?
Present.
On the agenda, we're going to have the minutes and approved, I'm going to ask for a waiving of those minutes, and approve them as submitted for the Commissioner Work Session, May 27th, the Commissioner Meeting on May 27th, and the closed session on May 27th. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye.
Next up, we're going to do certificates of appreciation. So this is the time of year, well, it's not the time of year, and it's sad to say, but we have some people stepping down from our boards that have served us really well, and I would like to call up their chairs or their designees to recognize them, and we'll start with zoning.
And we didn't do anything. Mr. Chairman, is someone's word?
Talk to the mic.
Sure, I should know that. Yeah, you all know me, I'm Wayne Parton, I'm the chairman of the zoning board, and Kate recently resigned, and then Bill just turned in his resignation, so we will miss them, and we appreciate their service to the zoning board and to the borough.
No, no, thank you, and thank you, Kate.
Yes.
Smooth this over a little bit, we'll put you all right there.
It's hard to move sideways.
What are you doing, moving toward this or?
Towards, towards you.
Oh, you might as well just stay up here. For the planning board, all right, super, please.
Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to recognize Doug McColister, who has served the planning for 18 years, influencing generations of planning board members. Doug's extraordinary knowledge of land use, of affordable housing will be sorely missed and hard to replace. I'd like to express my personal thanks to Doug, who's been a great mentor and influence to me. Thank you.
Get a screenshot. Yeah, yeah, you guys go first.
Your legacy will be the 25 man, mostly it doesn't last four years. Now, Anne, Anne Gorni has served the Shady Tree Commission well, and Scott?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Anne Kelling. She has served for 16 and a half, not quite 18 years, but Anne, single-handedly took our Commemorative Tree Program and has just taken it to a whole nother level. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Commemorative Tree Program, it's all the trees on King's Highway and slightly off with the plaques and names, that's Anne. So Anne, thank you so much, you will be sorely missed, and that program will miss you, but thank you for all your years of service.
I thought he said he was coming, but.
If we can come back to it, if Phil and Ed show up, thank you, thank you all for your service.
Yeah. Proclamation.
Proclamation.
We'll take a minute, thanks Doug.
I see Doug, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda are some proclamations. The first one is the Juneteenth Day, June 20th, 2025, and the proclamation reads, whereas, it doesn't read anything until I put these back on. All right, whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day or Freedom Day, is an annual federal holiday commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. It marks the day on June 19th, 1865, when Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the emancipation of enslaved African Americans, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued by President Abraham Lincoln. Juneteenth is a day of celebration, remembrance, and a reflection on the struggles and achievements of African Americans. It is a time to honor those who fought for freedom and equality, as well as to recognize the ongoing work towards racial justice and civil rights. Now, locally, the preserving Black Haddonfield History Project has worked to achieve acknowledgement and celebration of all those Black community members and historical sites that are at the heart of the Black experience in our borough. So let it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Borough of Haddonfield, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, we hereby recognize and proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth Day. Thank you. And the second proclamation is the Haddonfield Japan Exchange Month of July. Whereas communities across America are welcoming many new neighbors, friends, and citizens from countries and cultures throughout the world, people for whom English is not their native language. And the Haddonfield Japan Exchange, which was originated in 2006, invited the first group of Japanese students to explore and appreciate the richness of our unique Haddonfield community in 2007. And the program welcomes students from Sendai International School in the Mayagi Prefecture for a two-week period in the United States in the month of July, who stay with residents of Haddonfield in their home away from home. So be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Borough of Haddonfield do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Haddonfield Japan Exchange Month. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to monthly departmental reports. I will be the briefest in revenue and finance, because we have a presentation of the budget with Alex Davidson, our CFO, so stay tuned. Who would like to go first?
Frank.
All right, we'll do, I'll turn it over to, first, the public safety, why don't we start off with, we'll start off with Chief Cutler tonight.
Good evening, thank you, Commissioner. For the month of May, the police department entered or initiated 1,560 calls for the month of May, that's about average. We stopped 175 cars, and we wrote 427 tickets, that's parking and moving violations. We had one burglary for the month of May, that happened to be a commercial burglary to the Tavistock Country Club, and we arrested the gentleman that was inside, and he was remanded to the county jail. Other than that, there's nothing really to report, except last night, we did have a motor vehicle theft. That vehicle has been recovered, it was stolen last night in the 600 block of Washington Avenue, with the keys were in it, and it was unlocked. So we have to remind everybody to lock their cars, take the keys, and hide all your valuables. Other than that, there's really not much to report.
All right, thanks, Chief, and we've had some inquiries about, well, I guess the request for adding stop signs along Wood Lane, but we are putting other traffic calming measures in place there to include the thermoplastics as you're approaching the intersections there on the cross streets, like on Windsor and all the other streets in the estate section, and then clearly putting stop on the street as you're approaching those stop signs. So that'll be taking place in the next couple of weeks, they are under contract, but we've had some weather-related issues, so more to follow in that, and we'll update that on the app. And we ask everyone in that neighborhood, especially while we're redirecting traffic with Haddon under construction, which will be taking place the next six-plus months, to be very careful on those cross streets, because, you know, there's still 25 miles an hour, you do have a lot of people walking through there. We'll get some relief with schools being out, but when we come back in September, there's going to be a lot of foot traffic along the way there. So thanks, Chief, and then we'll turn it over to Chief Gorman.
Also, tonight, a total of 64 fire calls for the month. We had, of the 64, there were eight mutual aid calls and that we went out of town to assist other departments. We concluded our ISO, that's Insurance Service Office, rating, periodically, every so many years, they come and reevaluate the borough. We went through all the paperwork, we're just waiting to hear back from them, but they were very impressed with our amount of training that we do, drills that we do, certifications that we have, how forward-leaning we are in our officer training, and certainly a response time of 2 minutes and 4 seconds average, so that's something noteworthy. We didn't have any big fires for the month of May, even though it was kind of a little dry out there, we kind of skated some of those forest fires. EMS had 70 calls, and of the 70, 15 were mutual aid, that's going down, which is a good sign. The call rates are also going down for EMS, because we do not dispatch them on every fire call like we used to for years. We just didn't really see the advantage of doing that, so we stopped doing it. So you see the EMS calls go down a little bit, and are available to respond out for EMS. Conversely, we dispatch a fire truck now on every motor vehicle accident, every pedestrian motor vehicle accidents, as well as every unconscious person, and it works out very well and very successful program there. That's pretty much it for me, and listen, you need anything else, sir?
Just add one piece of commentary there, because you'll probably cover it next month, but there were two calls yesterday happening simultaneously, which required dispatching of a lot of our folks, and as a reminder, yesterday was Father's Day, a lot of our volunteer firefighters are, in fact, fathers, you know, and mothers, you know, as well. So just a reminder that for those volunteers, they get interrupted from their celebrations, festivities, barbecues, watching a Phillies game, whatever the case may be, to take care of us, and also. Hey, look, you take the good with the bad, right? If my wife had a honey-do list, I probably would have, like, ran out to the fire and fought it myself, but that was, it was, you know, a low obligation day for me yesterday. No, but just as a reminder, we are always looking for volunteers, so I encourage people to join the force, and our numbers are growing, and you'll be in good company if you join the team over there. So thank you, Chief. And Joanna, if you want to give an update on communications?
So with May, we had the new election, so we're going to be starting some new things. People may have noticed already that we're trying to put out before business meetings a little info, highlight information sheet, that goes a little more in-depth than what the ordinance and resolutions are. We'll also do a post after the meetings, if we have to put something out about, you know, a recap of what the meeting happened. Mostly, we'll do that for business meetings, for work sessions, we're trying to, you know, we're going as we're learning. We had the Memorial Day Parade, and I think those were our highlights, really, for May. We did Health and Wellness Festival before the election, which was actually really well-attended, and we got some new publicity for that.
Great. Thanks, Joanna.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks, Frank. A tear?
I'll pass it over to our Superintendent of Public Works, Bill Ober.
For the month of May, we had all our normal routine tasks, picking up vegetative waste, recycling, we had our chipper out, we're mowing grass, we're continuing to mulch. Couple of highlights, we had our Arbor Day tree planting, which Scott was there for. We installed the outdoor instruments at the library, if anybody's seen them. We had our pothole machine out, had our flags out for Memorial Day. We had the election booths put up and taken down for the elections. Upcoming projects, our street sweeping will get underway. We are working on seeding our playing fields and getting our Maple Kay building painted.
The door looks awesome. Yeah, no, it really did turn out nicely. You didn't see it, I don't know if you'd ever seen the door as red, but the blue door at Maple Kay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, good job.
We also have, is Doug in the room? Yeah, there you go.
Good evening. So later this month, we'll be submitting for the DOT Municipal Aid Grant, and that'll be for Rhodes Avenue from Nicholson Lane to Grove Street. This is kind of the yearly DOT application we do for the borough. We're also working on the Haddon Avenue Road Reconstruction Project, so those will be the road improvements that follow the utility work, and we'll look to finish those plans this month to get them over to the county for their review and approval as well. Also, the road improvement program for this year is on the agenda for tonight for award, and then, conversely, we are working on a few topographic outbound surveys for some of the affordable housing properties within the borough. Looking to start that this week, but hopefully the weather stays clear enough to do that work, so that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Your lips to God's ears on the weather, tell you that. So, thank you. One note on the communication side, give us a little patience as we learn the new processes of posting videos to the website, or actually to YouTube, and then to the site. So we'll keep working on that. It's not as easy as it looks, even though, especially when a meeting's almost four hours long, it's a really huge file, so give us a little patience, and we'll get them all up and catch up. So the next, we'll move to public comment for items listed on the agenda. This is your opportunity to address the commission on items A through M, or A through L, or actually M, it doesn't really matter, and we'll give you five minutes. If you think of something else, or if the spirit moves you from someone else's comments, you can have another three minutes to speak. Can I get a motion to open the floor to public comment? Not going afterward.
Okay. Motion to open public comment for items listed on the agenda.
I second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye.
So anyone who would like to speak at the lectern for public comment period on agenda items may do so now. You would like to speak?
Yeah.
All right, Bill. If you'd like to sit, that's wireless mic, we can bring it to you.
Okay, I want to thank the.
Name and address, please.
Okay, Bill Brown, 114 Center Street in Haddonfield.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the commissioners for approving the Lions Club sponsoring of the Fall Festival. And we're looking forward to it, and we have a lot of good people helping, a lot of people involved. I'm sure it's going to be very successful. I have two other thoughts or comments I'd like to make.
Go right ahead.
I don't know if the population of the town warrants it, but is there any chance that we could have five commissioners instead of three? That's one thought I just want to share with you. And another thought I have, too, is I think this year's election, being very close, it might be a good idea to consider, or at least think about, having a graded or ranking sort of voting. In other words, your first choice might be three points, second choice, two points, third choice, one point, because the way it is now, if you have three votes, your favorite gets the, the one you feel is the best for the mayor gets one vote, and the person you think was least likely to win gets a vote, too. So I think the ranking might be something you would like to consider. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill. And the way we're going to be working this is you can make comment, you can ask questions, just to save your time. We'll take all the questions, and then we'll either address them as points of order during the agenda item, or we can just address them, you know, if the spirit moves us. Anyone else in the room? All right, seeing none, we'll move to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom would like to make comment on agenda items, please raise your hand, or just unmute and start speaking. Oh, oh, good. Thank you, Chief. Thanks for protecting us. Zoom bombing's a real thing. All right, seeing none from the online audience, I will move to close a public comment on agenda items. I'll make the motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. So, Bill, you made comment on five commissioners and ranked voting, although, you know, I'm never going to say no to you, it wasn't in gen item, so we can address it right now if you'd like. That's not up to us, that's up to the citizens. If the citizen's so moved to want to do that, it's a referendum-type of item, collecting 1,000 signatures, I believe, some, yeah.
Statutory mechanism for that, I don't have.
Yeah, well, the first step would be draft it, second would be collect a lot of signatures, and then third, we'll get it on a ballot, but that is not something we decide, that's something that the public decides. And ranked voting, I think the same way, we could even cover that both in the same, in the same, you know, in the same ballot motion, if you so choose. Thank you.
If you're going to start the hard work of referendum vote, can you also include a liquor license in there for us Irishmen? Be greatly appreciated.
I don't know, one might take the other one down. So next, we'll move to ordinances. Ordinances are items that require two readings, so tonight, they are all first readings, meaning we read it, and then there is a 28-day?
Just for the budget, it's 28 days.
Oh, just 28 days, so it's just two meetings for ordinances. So budget ordinances need 28-day public comment period, most ordinances need a first and second reading. So tonight are all first readings. So the first ordinance, 2025-04, preserve a cap bank, and can we just give a description of, I'll read them all, and then we'll ask for descriptions of some of these. Ordinance 2025-05, amending Chapter 232 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, a first reading. Ordinance 2025-06, Chapter 54, entitled Senior Citizens Commission, first reading. 2025-07, a salary ordinance for non-union employees of a first reading. All these items are in your packets and have been online since Friday midday for review. The bank cap, Sharon, could you explain the cap for us?
Since we have our CFO here, we'll let him do it tonight.
Pass the buck to the guy that holds the buck. All right.
Thank you, Sharon. The first reading of the cap bank ordinances in reference to one of our cap laws, the township operates under two tats, two cap laws. One is the 1977 budget cap. The other, more familiar cap, is the 2010 Tatts Levy Cap. The ordinance that's on the agenda this evening is in reference to the 1977 budget cap. What that ordinance says essentially is, whatever room we do not use in our budget cap, we can bank it for use in future year's budget, up to two succeeding years, and if not used in those two years, it lapses. What this is essentially is good government and gives us maximum flexibility for the succeeding two years.
So in a year where we don't think we might need it, the next year, we might need it, so.
Especially in a high inflationary environment, it's imperative we introduce and adopt this ordinance.
All right, thank you, Alex. The vehicle and traffic first reading, Frank, do you want to describe what's coming to the borough?
Do you want to vote on each?
We could do, we could vote one at a time, I just wanted to go through them all first.
This is installing two stop signs on Lake, and the cross streets are, Chief Cutler? Colonial and Friends. We've had some requests from residents there about speeding, and we have done a speed study there. It didn't meet exactly the requirements for speed bumps, but with the school nearby, this is an approved traffic calming measure, and so, and it is a rather narrow street one way, so we are putting these in place as a way to calm the traffic down in that neighborhood. There are a lot of other streets in town where people request other stop signs, and we don't have the flexibility just to put a stop sign there. Chief can maybe go into some detail on that.
New Jersey follows the manual and uniform traffic control devices by the federal government, so we have to follow that. There are certain warrants or criteria that have to be met before you can place a stop sign. We did a study on Friends Avenue because of the complaints, and it does meet two of the warrants, basically the narrowness of the street and the pedestrians in the area due to the school and the traffic volume that the school creates, so we just thought this was a good way to try and quell that problem.
All right, thanks, Chief, and thanks to the residents in those, on Lake and the two cross streets, and residents in that neighborhood for bringing to our attention. That's all.
That's right, thank you. Chapter 54, the Senior Citizen Commission first reading, this is when I was chair, when I oversaw it, Senior Citizens Commission, this is a recognition of the great work of Sherri Segal to upgrade the title from a coordinator to director. We have another Director of Recreation, and this will be the Director of Senior Citizen Services as an update to the ordinance. And then the salary ordinance for non-union employees, that is, no, you can explain that one, Sharon.
Certainly. So this is the legal way for your employees to get a raise? Without this authorization, we don't have the authority to provide the employees their cost-of-living raise. This follows the contracts, it's 1.5% on April 1st, and 1.5% on October 1st.
And overall, because of the spread out, in one budget year, it's 1.5% increase.
Correct. The cost, the financial cost to the borough is only 1.5%.
Yep, thank you. So now, Deanna, will we vote individually on these ordinances?
Yes, please.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve 2025-04 bank cap. Can I get a second?
Second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. Ordinance 2025-05, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve 2025-05.
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. I'll move to.
I'll move to accept 2025-06 Senior Citizen Commission entitlement. Can I get a second?
Second.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. And ordinance 2025-07, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2020, 2025-07.
I'll second that.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. Next on the agenda are resolutions under the consent agenda. Resolutions below have been placed on the consent agenda by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of those items unless requested by one of us. So we have item 84, authorization to pay vouchers. 85, authorization to grant total exempt veteran deductions and cancel the remaining 2025 property taxes on three properties. Authorization for Celebrations Association to hold the Independence Day Parade. Authorization to close King's Highway for the Partnership for Haddonfield's Halloween Night Market Four event. Authorization of number 88, authorization to approve general event permits of various types. Number 89, authorization to approve appointments of various types. Authorization for number 90, the award to bid for the 2025 road program. Number 91, authorization to award the bid for solid waste and recyclable material collection services. Number 92, authorization to approve change order number three to the 2024 road program. Item number 93, authorization to approve change order number one of removal of hazardous materials within Cooley Hall, location block 13, lot 25.
That was for the demolition, my, my apologies, I had, had misunderstood this one. That, the resolution actually says it's for the demolition. I put the wrong title on the, the agenda. It's for the demolition of Cooley Hall located at block 13, lot 25. It just needs correction on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, removal of hazardous materials, demolition.
Right.
Okay. And this change order, oh, we'll get to that in a second. And then number 94, authorization to submit the application to the State Transportation Trust Funds under the Safe Streets to Transit for King's Highway and Washington Avenue pedestrian improvements along King's Highway from Tanner Street to Warwick Road and Washington Avenue, from King's Highway to Lincoln Avenue. Can I get a, well, any discussion before we make a motion? I will point out a couple things. The authorization for Celebrations to hold the Independence Day Parade. Celebrations is a valued partner to the borough in terms of entertaining and providing services for the entertainment of, of our town. The Independence Day Parade is a very big part of that. So I wanted to point out and thank Celebrations for their work in holding the parade. I'd also like to point out in the general event permit applications is the Fall Festival, Mr. Brown. So we'll be approving that for October 4th. Appointments for various, this is a very important part of citizenship and volunteerism. Ever, as you noticed tonight, we recognize some, some folks who have done meritorious service to our boards and are stepping down. Those will be filled by alternates that have been sitting there learning the ropes and, and taking full seats on those boards, and now we have to replenish that. So anybody who's interested in giving their time and talent to the borough, take a look at the various boards and, and sign up for something you might be interested in, and we'll post a link to that on social media, and you could always walk into borough, into the clerk's office and, and request information as well. And then, no, that's all I had.
Can we get some more information on demolition of Cooley Hall for document?
Sure.
Absolutely. So when they were demolishing Cooley Hall, they found, we had done a whole project before that of removing all the asbestos in the building, so that it was an easier, quicker demolition, and ensuring that the asbestos was properly removed. The, when they demolished it and they were removing portions of it that are underground, they came across a pipe that had asbestos. So that was a change order to the contract because that was not in the contract. That $9,200 is the removal cost specifically for that pipe.
Got it.
And Sharon, that's why that, that transformer kind of thing is sitting on, is still sitting on the property, because that can't be removed until the pipe is remediated.
Correct.
Okay.
So the original contract amount was $763,000, and now it's 772 with the additional.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks for the explanation. Can I get a motion to approve resolutions 84 through 94?
Motion to approve resolutions 84 through 94 under consent agenda.
Second that.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. Now we'll come to the section of resolutions that will be introduced and discussed one at a time. And the first up is resolution number 95, the authorization to introduce the 2025 Borough Budget. And for that, I will ask our CFO, Alex Davidson, to kind of walk us through the budget. If you would, give us some highlights so that we can understand how the borough spends the money. And for those on Zoom, we're opening the document and sharing it out so you can see.
You're going to have to share screen.
Pardon?
You have to share the screen.
Oh, yeah, don't forget to share the screen, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone, thank you, commissioners. On tonight's agenda is the introduction of our 2025 municipal budget. We always like to, next slide, please.
Well, one second, can you move that bar, or actually, you can hide that bar? See that little pin symbol? There you go, and then that you can reduce down to nothing. Right, there you go, thank you.
So we always like to start this presentation with some tea statistics regarding our current year budget. The 2025 average assessed residential property is at $535,000. One penny to the average assessed home value is $53.57 annually, and one penny on the tax rate generates for the municipality $242,000 in revenue. Tonight's budget is introducing with the increase to the rate of four and two-thirds pennies, bringing the total municipal tax rate in 2025 to 63 cents per $100 of value to the average assessed home. 2024 is the last year we have full year data for the taxes, and we thought it was important for the public and everyone to know the breakdown of your taxes, where the municipality has the responsibility of collecting everyone's taxes. Everything you pay to the municipality does not stay with the municipality. Of the municipal, to the average municipal resident, $17,000 of taxes collected, and of that $17,000, 9,700 goes to the school, 4,000 to the county, 3,100 to the municipality, $53,000, $53 to our open space, and $212 to the library. But why are we going to propose an increase for this evening? Well, from 24 to 25, the state has slashed our state aid by $102,000. Additionally, we've hired a full-time police officer, an additional full-time police officer. We had a nonpartisan election expense that happened this past May. Our fire stipend increased for year-round fire protection. We had our health insurance premium rates increased, and as everyone is well aware, we had a high interest rate environment that's driving up our short-term borrowing costs.
We will have comment.
Sure, the nonpartisan election was the election we just had, from a cost standpoint, yeah, we'll comment, yes. Go ahead.
Some of our highlights for the municipal budget, it is just over $25 million. It includes a $1.8 million of self-funded road reconstruction. I stress it's self-funded because we are not taking any debt and not incurring any borrowing costs or interest costs for the reconstruction of these roads. We're also paying down $1.5 million of short-term notes. Of that $1.5 million, we are utilizing $1.4 million from a state grant. Fire stipend is paying for 24/7 coverage for a full year. This coverage started in May of 2024, which goes back to the previous slide on why the increase for this year be for the full year of coverage. We created a traffic officer in the police department, and the road program includes street state improvements for Haddon Ave as well. This is a graphical representation of where the municipal appropriations land. As you can see, the largest segment of our budget goes to debt service, followed by public safety and public works. So it's paying for police, it's paying for trash, and it's paying for capital improvements, is the majority of our budget. And lastly, we fund our budget not solely through municipal taxes, but also through surplus, which is our own fund balance regenerated every year that we use to fund partial, part of the budget. Local revenue, that's our fees and permits. State aid, we do receive just under $1 million from the state annually. Construction permits is $400,000. We have just under $200,000 of shared service revenue coming in. We have $200,000 of grants at the introduced budget. And finally, we have $395,000 anticipated for delinquent taxes. And that completes the 2025 municipal budget presentation.
Could you scroll back up to the dollar for a moment?
Absolutely.
So, if you can explain, what are the most variable sections of, of, of our budget?
Variable sections, the most variable that are out of our control is mostly employee benefits and pensions, because we are contractually required to provide those items to our employees, full-time employees. And no matter what's within our control, the state governs primarily with the pensions, how much we have to fund towards the pension. Health insurance, it's not news to anyone in this room what the health insurance environment looks like right now. And while we take steps to mitigate those impacts in hiring part-time employees as much as we can, full-time employees require the fringe benefit of health benefits, and employees contribute to their insurance under chapter 78 and other collectively negotiated agreements. But those alone are the greatest variables in budget, that the biggest cost drivers, really.
No, thanks, Alex.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Alex? One of the items that we did talk about at the work session was, as you said about benefits, was that we have a younger workforce that are marrying, and so they're converting from single plans to, to couples, and then also having children, so then their, their plans are going up. Of course, we encourage that, but, but it does come at a cost to the borough, and as you said, unanticipated and, and hard plan. Thank you.
Can you explain to us the debt service?
Sure, so debt service is primarily generated from our capital improvement plan. When capital ordinance is authorized by the commissioners, it is determined at that time how those capital ordinances are funded. Generally, they're funded through the issuance of debt. When the debt is issued, that goes to fund the capital program. Then we'll issue bonds and/or notes, and we'll pay that over the period of time. For notes, it's one-year bonds, it's however, whatever the useful life of that bond issue was.
All right, and other variable things, and this will answer a question from the audience. You know, something like our Senior Citizen Commission to Maple Kay, the sort of budget of our Maple Kay is around $30,000 a year. A municipal election itself, just with labor and then transaction fees, are almost $15,000. So, so in one action or one day, we're, we're almost half the budget of, of the Maple Kay Center. So that, that kind of give you the answer of how expensive an, an election is, is around $15,000. Seeing no more questions?
Wait, did that answer your question?
Well, so here's the thing about the budget. So this is the first reading. This gives you a whole month to take a look at the documentation we have online, to the images, and then we will have what's called the budget hearing at the July?
28th.
28th meeting. So you have a whole month to come up with all the questions you want, and this will have its own public comment period on the, on the budget hearing, so it's, it's its own special thing. So please, bring your questions, I'm, I'm not trying to discourage them now, but we don't have a public comment period right now. You can have questions at the very end of our agenda, and we'll have another open comment period. You can ask now, and you'll give us a month to answer them, we won't answer them then. Or you can come to the budget hearing. So that's, because yes, you'll find many things in the budget where you want to have questions for, so thanks. Any other questions from the, from the commissioners? All right, well, then I will move to, I'll, I won't move, I will ask for a motion on the authorization to introduce the 2025 Borough Budget.
Motion to introduce the 2025 Borough Budget.
I'll second that.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. Next is the authorization, authorization to introduce the 2025 Business Improvement District, the bid, and the Partnership for Haddonfield budget. And we have Michael Mercanti. Michael, can you say your last name for me so I can hear it from the horse's mouth? Mercanti, all right, thank you.
Like a sea shanty?
Oh, well, one of my favorite things is the summer shanty, so, oh, thank you, Michael.
All right, thank you, commissioners. This is an abbreviated presentation of what you have in your packets. The full packet's available at the clerk's office, and I'd be happy to make it available to anyone who's asking. We are looking to put it up on our website, but those pictures are very heavy in terms of weight, so we're figuring that out at the moment. This is our current board members, we are mostly full, we have one retail vacancy at this time. Many of these members have served for quite some time, and they're very dedicated to what they do. They put in a lot of hours to manage your Business Improvement District. Just to give you some highlights of the things that we are focusing on this year, as always, the events are some of the highlights throughout the year. We have a considerable budget put aside to have new events, have reoccurring events, traditional ones, and to enhance some of the pre-existing ones. One of the major projects that we're looking to do with the Visual Enhancements Committee is to implement a new wayfinding sign pointing down south of Chestnut Street to some of the businesses we have down there. We have some ideas in place, we haven't had a chance to present it in front of you yet. Our Retail Retention and Recruitment Committee continues to review, accept, and ultimately award retention and planters grants applications. This is a very scrutiny part of our board meetings to make sure we are spending Borough dollars responsibly. We also have a considerable budget put aside for our marketing and promotional efforts. The one that stands out, of course, is the Patco advertising campaign. We have three flights happening throughout the year. We currently have our Discover Downtown flight happening. We are also utilizing different types of QR code scanning to have better analytics of some of the folks who take the train and how we are having an impact on them. Marketing is also focusing very much on content gathering, in which we are making available to the businesses, so acting as like a professional photographer or videographer, assets that they can use for their own promotion. And finally, of course, we are working with as many nonprofits in the areas as, in Haddonfield as much as we can. There's just some examples of our projects, you'll see that's Patco advertising, banner, some of the photography we've taken at events, and just a poor rendering of our new wayfinding signage. This, of course, is the breakdown. So new this year is that we are able to incorporate revenue taken from sponsorships and events into our actual budget. Of course, we have our appropriated surplus, and of course, we have a money market account at one of the four banks here in Haddonfield. The interest rates have not been so great, so we have reduced that. Just breaking down the spending, most of the budgets are relatively the same with a reduction in marketing and public relations. The reason for this being is just in the competitive market that we are currently in, we are not seeing return on some of the large traditional ads, so we've actually taken the time to reduce our budget to focus more on localized, more effective forms of marketing. And then, of course, the, just the rest of the committees, like I said, are relatively the same with a total annual budget of $307,550. And that's it.
Thank you, Michael, for the presentation. Before, actually, we get into discussion, Sharon, could you just describe why PFH is in front of us? What the bid is, and what has to do with the borough?
Certainly. The Business Improvement District is a
The Business Improvement District is a entity that the commissioners have authorized after a referendum was passed. It is a special tax on the business district, which is the $250,000 assessment that you see in the budget. That has been the same assessment since it was created in 2006, I believe. Yeah, but it didn't start until 2006. So it is, as I indicated, is special tax just on the business. There are two different tax rates for the business district. There's a higher tax rate if you are in what's considered the core downtown, which is King's Highway, and a different rate as you branch out. The state provides you the authority to establish one of these, and the focus is then to, the focus of that spending is specifically on the downtown. So whether it is advertising, events, cleaning, hiring, you know, workers to come in landscaping, all of those things are things that are allowable under that special improvement district, otherwise known as a business improvement district. But because it is a quasi-entity of the government, the actual budget is passed by the Borough Commissioners so that they have the authority to actually, you have the authority to tax. Technically, they don't. So you appoint all of the board members. One of you actively sits on the board. So therefore, the passage of the actual budget has to be done by the commissioners.
All right, thank you. Any discussion?
Not for me.
And for the record, Commissioner Cole is the seat, she oversees the partnership for Haddonfield for the borough. So I will make a motion to introduce, authorization to introduce the 2025 bid district partnership for Haddonfield Budget.
Second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye.
Next up are two sides of one coin, and that is about affordable housing. So we'll take them one at a time. The authorization to endorse the 2025 amendment to the borough's third round housing element and fair share plan amendment as adopted by the planning board on June 4, 2025. Seeing Matt is not here, it'd fall to you, Sharon, to kind of give an explanation of the round three amendment.
As you're aware, we've been in front of Judge Schweitzer to try and complete our third round approval process. And since we have awarded the contract to Woodmont, the final ask from the court before our hearing in July for final adoption of our third round plan was to bring the plan from future tense into existing. So all of the changes that were in the third round were simply a matter of changing, we're proposed to do this to we have done this.
Thank you. And Sal, this will, the authorization for the round three will be our final fulfillment of the round three obligations?
Yes, from the municipal standpoint, from governmentally, from commissioners' action, yes, the final step will be the hearing that's scheduled by the courts before Judge Schweitzer, the compliance hearing. At the conclusion of that, that will be the final step.
Okay, and then from the size of the packet that was posted online and circulated last week, that's the majority of the pages in that monster document are all of the backup documentation and that of proof for our round three obligation.
No, that, it was 600 pages posted online. I saw most of that's actually fourth round.
Oh, most of it's fourth round? All right, super. Well, then I just stole my own thunder. All right, so any other discussion on Resolution 97? All right, so I will ask for a motion to authorize and endorse the 2025 amendments to the borough's third round housing element and fair share plan. Motion to authorize and endorse Resolution 97.
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. And on the tail side of this coin, authorization to endorse the borough's fourth round housing element and fair share plan as adopted by the planning board on June 4, 2025, and adopting the spending plan annexed thereto as Appendix P as the borough's fourth round spending plan.
Me?
Sure.
So the fourth round technically begins now. We are required to have our plan adoption into the courts by June 30. We had a planning board hearing because the affordable housing plan, regardless of which round it is, is actually a master plan element. So the planning board holds the public hearing on the plan and approves it as part of the master plan. The fourth round, to simplify it, is simply we had an obligation of 35 rehabilitation units, which is we complete through our participation in the county program. We are presenting our plan with an RDP of seven and an unmet need of 86. The RDP are the units that we have to ensure over the next 10 years actually are actually built. How we are proposing that is we are allowed to add one additional unit from Tarditi Commons. There is a cap on the amount of senior units that we are able to apply to our plans. They are still, after we take this one unit, we will still have 27 units available for the future. The Bancroft property with agreement with Woodmont provides 12, where in our third round we needed 10, so we were able to use two of those two additional for our RDP of seven. There were two projects that have been before planning board and have received approval, which are including affordable units. One of those is at 110 North Haddon, which is going to provide two affordable units, and the other one is at 118 Ellis, which is supposed to provide us three affordable units with the bonus cap of our one bonus unit, which will completely give us nine RDPs to match our seven. The unmet need is based on a vacant land adjustment. Since we are considered a built-out town, for the most part, and most of our development is redevelopment, we just have to provide the opportunity for development, for redevelopment to occur. We are doing that in our third round. We had a number of sites throughout, mostly Haddon Avenue, that where we indicated that those could potentially either have a height adjustment or some other type of adjustment with zoning changes that would, if they provide residential development in any part of the development of those properties, they would have to be required to provide affordable housing regardless of the number of units. Whereas we have an overlay through the whole town that if you do more than four units, you are then required to kick in the affordable housing. In those unmet need sites, you have to provide 20% regardless of the number of affordable, market rate units that you provide. We are adding two new additional sites during this round. That is the 807 building at the end of Haddon Avenue, which is currently a three-story commercial building. What we are allowing that currently, right now, the zoning is only for commercial and office. So what we're allowing through this overlay zone is that they would be able to have residential in that building. But then again, any number of residential that they put in there would have to be 20% affordable housing. The other site we are adding is the Rite Aid property, the 711 down to the gas station. And that is meeting, allowing up to three stories on those properties.
All right, thanks, Sharon. And to be clarified, that does not compel them to change any of those uses to residential. It just provides the opportunity, if they so choose, to change the use
Correct.
To have a smoother way through.
Correct.
All right, thank you. And just to point out, we did not do this as a presentation tonight. We did this as a presentation at our work session. So this is where work sessions are, where we do the work, where we understand the changes that are going to be coming to us. And the action meetings is where we secondarily explain it to the public where it's been explained to us at the work session. So thank you for both the presentation last week and the explanation tonight. Any other questions? All right, then I will also make the motion to authorize to endorse the borough's fourth round housing element and fair share plan and adopt the spending plan annexed as Appendix P as the borough's fourth round spending plan, also known as Number 98.
Second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. And Sal, I hope it's okay to shorten that reference to just 98 after I explain the whole thing. All right, super, so we don't sound
98, for the record, yes.
I think I have the biggest breath here, so I got through it in one sentence. And that concludes the agenda part of this. And so I'm going to make a motion to open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anything you'd like to share for anything that you've heard or anything that you want to bring to our attention. I'd like to make a motion to open the comment to non-agenda items. Can I get a second?
Second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye.
The floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bill Kelling, and I live at 47 Center Street. And I am here tonight to talk about the Crowswoods Gardens. Just a short history encapsulates, for those who aren't familiar with it, is that the Crowswoods was originally the town's dumping grounds. But in the 1970s, the landfill was capped using standard practices at the time, primarily covering the grounds with several feet of soil. What emerged in 1982 was the Crowswoods Recreation Area, a multi-use recreational area consisting of playing fields, a community garden, and a peripheral path, a bike path around the garden. But after 50 years of wind, rainstorms, and settlement of the landfill, all natural occurrences, the Crowswoods Recreational Area is in need of restoration. To that end, using an engineering subcontractor, the borough has applied for a grant from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to remediate the area, adding soil as necessary, correcting the drainage issues, and installing probably methane vents as they're needed. The grant was submitted in September of 2024 and includes a proposed aerial view of the restored Crowswoods Recreational Area. However, the concept now presented shows the recreation area now contains exclusively soccer fields. The Crowswood Garden has been scrubbed, and the plans are now, and the gardens' plans are now nonexistent. And this was further confirmed in a February 2025 letter, just a little over four months ago, that the engineering company submitted to the borough, to the New Jersey DEP, detailing that five of the soccer fields would be hopefully artificial turf, and one of the fields would be under a protective bubble. Again, no mention of the gardens. I appreciate the information that I did receive from Commissioner Troy in response to my email a number of weeks ago indicating that the grant will take many months to play out and that the gardens will be accommodated and accounted for in the future, and that the area is not just for playing fields. That said, I am not terribly encouraged by the two documents that were submitted to the New Jersey DEP and which I have been able to read and which show that the gardens are not considered in the plan. So I know that things happen quickly and time flies, and I think it's the right time to make the point that, to me, the gardens are very important. They've been a part of our fabric here in the community since 1982, and they've provided hundreds, maybe even thousands, of families and individuals many hours of positive recreation and sociability. We provide hundreds of pounds of fresh produce to the South Jersey Food Bank every summer. I've been a gardener there since 2009. The gardens are organic in terms of what we grow and how we do it, and I believe they're also organic to the borough. And while Crowswoods Gardens are part of the heritage of the recreational area out there, and I would hope that in the future they will remain to be part of Crowswoods. In short, to me, the gardens deserve to have a footprint within the remediated Crowswood Recreational Area. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Pardon?
I said, thank you.
Oh, you were looking. Any other comments from the floor? Please come, come to the lectern. Name an address. Just street, you don't have to give your number.
I'm Andrea Hotelling, and I live on West Summit Avenue. And in the May 30 issue of the retrospect regarding the coverage of the May 27 Commissioners' Meeting, it reported plans for the mitigation of flooding in that area and cited was the Chuzelanding Road between, you know, but it said between Bellevue and Mountwell. And I'd like a clarification, I have some other questions, but I'd like a clarification or an explanation of this. I'm totally mystified. Bellevue is at a significantly higher elevation than West Summit Avenue, and from Bellevue to Mountwell is all a downhill grade. The slope continues to the Station Avenue-West Summit Avenue intersection with Chuzelanding Road, and then that's the lowest point, and that's where the flooding occurs. During the infamous storm of June 20 of 2019, we were almost at that anniversary, all the flooding was at the Chuzelanding intersection and the intersection with West Summit and Station with water backing up West Summit. My family was affected by that with water backing up into our basement, as were many of our neighbors. So besides an explanation of what actually is happening and why Bellevue and Mountwell is cited, the other thing I'd like to know, if there are going to be anything actually accomplished, because the previous big flood was in 2019, but the problem goes back to 1995. I have information from Commissioners' Meetings from 1995. I have newspapers back to 1995 about the serious flooding at that intersection. And so far, here we are 30 years later, and nothing has been accomplished. So I really would appreciate if I could learn more about what's planned and if anything is actually going to be done for the flooding on Chuzelanding Road, West Summit and Station. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Any other comments from the floor?
Joan Gilmore, 37 Ellis Street. Just wondering, I think I had asked about this a while ago to the Public Works, about when the back of the building, the windows are going to be painted, restored, just wondering. I mean, I walk up to this building every time for a meeting, probably for the past two years now, and I haven't seen anything happen. So just wondering whether that's going to happen because the windows are looking pretty bad.
You mean on this building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before we get to any of these, I'll move, not seeing, well, everyone who was here actually spoke. So we'll move to the online, if anyone has comments on non-agenda items or if anything.
Hi, Shayna Marshall, Center Street. Just want to compliment the audio and visual on Zoom tonight, especially the use of screen share. It's excellent and very appreciated. It's excellent and very appreciated.
Well, thank you. Shayna is a frequent flyer on Zoom, and so she would know the difference. Anyone else? All right, following my seven-second rule, we will move to close public comment on non-agenda items. Can I get a second?
Second.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. So is there any discussion that we'd like to have for comments that we have here, or we can collect them for later? Bill, I will say, from the garden's standpoint, the gardens are a very important part of the community, and there is also the realization that they will have to move. So communication with the leadership of the Crowswoods Gardens, they asked, "What about this growing season?", and we gave them assurance that this growing season wouldn't be affected. We really can't say at this point whether next season would be affected or not, because the way, some things move fast, some things move slow, but the rumor that the gardens are going away would suggest that that's a forever statement, where they could be relocated temporarily while the necessary remediation work at Crowswoods would have to happen. There's a significant cost to move the gardens that the borough would undertake to relocate the activities, and then a decision on where they go back would go. The thing about online, and I'll make this comment as well, is when you make an application, I believe we said five concepts were in that plan that were submitted to the DEP, and Concept Three is what's been circulated out, you know, to the public for comment and to further out. So the more work that's identified to be done at Crowswoods requires more remediation. At one point, it wasn't sure if the garden's location was part of it. It is now certain that the garden's location is part of that. It could even mean that the pavilion area, the pavilion would actually have to be removed, you know?
Right, I understand that. The point I was really making is that...
No, comments over, but I'm gonna let him talk. Go ahead, Bill.
In the long term, the garden may have to be shut for a year, maybe even longer, I don't know, but in the long term, I would like to see the garden return to its heritage location at Crowswoods. I can't think of a better place in town where that garden should be. There's great sunshine, there's no roots, the trees don't interfere, it's a beautiful place to work with the fields out there as well. I think there should be existing compatibility between having soccer fields, whether they're turfed or not turfed, and the garden out there as well. So interim, I agree, I don't know what will happen, Dave, and I'm, you know, whether or not you'll even be able to accommodate gardeners who want a garden while the remediation is going on, I'm not clear about that. The thing that I'm most clear about is, the gardens need to be at Crowswoods.
Sure, and I appreciate your sentiment there. And I will say, this will be a community absolute discussion, because it involves not only the active recreation, you know, that happens at that space, but also the gardeners, the passive uses of the Crowswoods Nature Preserve. I mean, that's its official name, right? So it covers the woods as well. And I would love to see the conversation move to the public sphere to talk about what's best, because, you know, the three of us deciding what's best really comes from public input. So thanks for speaking tonight.
And I can speak to some of the history of this. So I mean, there's two grants that are in discussion here. So one is the small grant that was approved, that basically we submitted on a parallel path with the larger one that has the concept drawings along with it. So the smaller one is what we're approved for, basically it is defining the perimeter of where the original, where the original landfill was. So that's kind of step one. And then, at the request of basically NJDEP, NJEDA, they said you can submit these things, you know, basically at the same time in the, just to improve like the turnaround time, the approval process for it. So at least as I saw it, and maybe I was kind of misunderstood at the time, but it was basically step one is kind of define the perimeter of where that is, and that may dictate whether what we can or can't do with the existing Crowswoods Gardens, that if there's, you know, high levels of, you know, gases or benzene or whatever the case may be there, that may be a different discussion, saying, you know what, this probably is not the best place for any garden. So that will be defined by when they define the perimeter of the original landfill. And then two, I kind of viewed as in, we were requesting a lot at the time, saying, you know, in a perfect world, we'd like to have all these things. I would expect the state would come back at some point and say, "You're not going to have all those things." You know, you asked for five different fields and, you know, cover, we're going to give you two fields and no cover, or something like that. And then that's when we're going to have a discussion about what do we do with the remainder of the land, you know, basis, what we get approval for and the funds that are available.
Yes. I mean, the key is, the second grant hasn't been approved by any means. So the main issue is, in order to qualify for these brownfield funds, it has to be a redevelopment of an area. And so, the Commissioner is correct, you put in your pie in the sky wish, the funding is not guaranteed to be there. So if they don't have the funds and they don't approve a concept of the plan, then we just go back to still being required to then spend money, our own taxpayer dollars, to fund the recapping of the landfill and putting dirt back on top of after the cap is finished and grass seed. So...
Pie in the sky omitted the gardens.
The gardens weren't necessarily omitted. They're omitted from where they are existing. It doesn't mean there's not still going to be a Crowswoods. It doesn't mean that there might not be a better place for them. That conversation hasn't been completed yet. There's, it's a little too early knowing, not knowing, as the Commissioner indicated, where exactly the landfill is, if we're fairly certain that the landfill is under the gardens. Yes, there's still borings, we're not sure how far over back by that area, because there's an area the Public Works used behind that. We're not sure if it goes into there. We're pretty confident that it goes under the pavilion. It's trying to figure out the existing, the full existing area. That's what this first grant does. This provides funding so that it's not borne by the residents, and we're able to get this work done through the brownfields funding.
It doesn't answer the answer, it answers the problem. It gives us an answer to the scope of the problem.
Correct.
And then we can have the conversation about that. But as Frank said, you know, you put out a pie in the sky, because you, any way you slice it, we're spending at least $2.5 million. And we would like to be able to effectively spend that with matching funds if possible, but if not, we still have to carry the nut and remediate the area. So that's what we're looking at as the problem statement. There hasn't been a solution statement yet at all. So, and I know we're committed to having public input in a lot of it, because there are a lot of competing interests down there. So, thank you. To move on to, well, first, thanks Shayna, for the feedback on Zoom. You know, the AV upgrades in late April were long-accommoding, and I'm glad to see that it was money well-spent so far. So I appreciate the feedback. Joan, Borough Hall Windows. Do you want me to take that?
No, I can handle this, because it's something you don't even know yet. So we had put this out several times to contractors, trying to find somebody to do it, we couldn't get pricing for it. We just made a connection with the Carpenters Union and our Superintendent of Public Works, I'm sorry, wrong person. Superintendent of Public Works is actually setting up a meeting to get them in to determine the cost for them to come and do it. So I am hopeful that sometime this summer, it'll actually finally be addressed, but that was the issue. We couldn't, believe it or not, we couldn't find someone that would respond to us and provide us with a price to be able to fix them. So that's the answer to that. I can also take the next question if you want.
Sure, I was going to just say, we have to eat our own dog food when it comes to historic preservation, so.
Yeah, yes. And so the mitigation and flooding, what was, the action that was taken at the May meeting was to apply for a grant. The grant is potentially to narrow the road on Chews Landing for three blocks and install green infrastructure. You are correct, those are higher, and it comes down to Station and Chews. The idea is, if you're out there even during a storm that's not as severe as the 2019 storm, or even the 4th of July storm we had a couple of years ago, you will see that a river of water comes off of the one side, from all of the side streets, and builds and builds and builds, which causes the problem at Station. So what this grant would do is, it puts storage all along the one side of the roadway, so that we can try and collect that water, so that it doesn't make it down to Station and Chews, which would help relieve the problem at Station and Chews. I completely understand that this problem goes back for years. Part of it is trying to work with the county, because it is a county road, but what we have learned, and to our knowledge, only recently, in the past, you know, two years when we did Lansdowne, was we always thought that the pipes that went from Chews to King's Highway, connected to a King's Highway pipe for the county, it doesn't. It crosses over King's Highway, goes down Lansdowne, which goes down eventually to Barberry and Homestead, which is, which collects over 400 acres of water from town. So if all of those pipes get filled up, there's nowhere for that water to go. And what we have discovered, and I've been trying to deal with, is that goes into Newton Creek. Newton Creek is tidal, along with the same as the Cooper is tidal. If the water is up, then there's no place for that water to go anywhere for any of that 400 acres. But even in those storms, there are four or five towns in front of us that are all putting the water into Newton Creek. So by the time it gets to us, the last one on the line, it's usually full. So it's a much larger regional problem that we have been trying to address. We were hoping some of the dredging of the Newton Creek would help and be able to allow a little more water out. We haven't seen that as being too, too successful. We installed a $2.2 million underground basin down on Homestead. We were hoping that that would at least mitigate the majority of the problems, but that fills up rather quickly. So it's an ongoing battle with the severity of the storms constantly increasing, and infrastructure that's nonexistent from a town that's been developed over 300 years. So we understand, we are trying to solve it. We're just very limited in how we can. We also have the problem of not being able, even if we had all the money in the world to install those underground tanks, we're limited as to where we can install them, because there are so many utilities in the road, it's very difficult to find even a place for you to be able to put them. So I think that handles those two.
Well, I'll share a personal anecdote about June 20th, 2019. My 11-year-old son, I lived on Bellevue and Chews. He stepped into the rushing water going past our driveway and wound up washed out to the middle of Chews Landing Road. He lost his footing, and the water carried him, an 11-year-old boy, you know, probably 350 feet from our driveway out to the middle of the road. That's how fast the water runs down Bellevue. You're right, it all runs downhill, and it scarily runs very quickly down that street. So that should cover all the public comment. Do we have a closed session tonight?
Do.
For?
Personnel?
Personnel and potential contract negotiations.
Okay. From a highlight standpoint, if we could just review, we awarded the road program to?
APS, Asphalt Paving Systems.
Right. And we awarded the Solid Waste and Recycling Material Collection Services to?
Suburban?
Yep, Suburban. So thank you, everyone. We are making the motion to go into closed session. When we return from closed session, there will be no action, so we will return and... I think, no, I know, I haven't gotten there yet. So I haven't made the motion, but in practice, we are opening and only opening this section to the press for unlimited time, questions, periods before we go into closed, on record. Please, if the press wants to come to the dais, or come to the lectern to ask questions, be our guest. Sure, you can ask anybody anything who's up here from the lectern, Joan.
Oh, boy. I have so many notes scribbled. Okay, recording...
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Ann, for your years of service, too.
Thanks, Bill.
I just wanted a couple of clarifications on Crowswoods. You, Dave, I think you mentioned a circulation of Concept Three. Was that done by the borough, or was that done on social media by somebody else?
It was done on social media by someone else from an Open Public Records Act request.
I see. So they obtained all of the...
Well, they obtained that image, that's what they asked for.
Okay, and Concept Three is just one of how many concepts?
Of three.
Three of three?
Of three.
Okay.
Okay, so the other two concepts are still under consideration?
No, I misspoke.
Everything's under consideration if we get the grant.
Okay, and what you're saying now, if you get the grant, which won't be till, when will you know?
We won't. Right now, we're still doing the work. Over the summer, they're doing the work for the first grant that we received, which was to delineate the boundaries of the actual old landfill, because there's no final, there's no paperwork on where it went, when they worked on the closing.
From the '70s or '80s, or whatever that was.
Correct. So that's the first part. You know, jumping ahead to what's going to be finalized with a second, with the second grant, we probably won't even know about potentially getting the second grant until early 2026.
Okay, and then so, then the plan would be to have a community-wide conversation about what happens there, and the discussion of the three concepts?
I'm sure we would, yes.
Okay, that when you know, if you're notified.
Yeah, those three concepts, or whatever concepts could come out of, when we know the scope of the problem, this, you know, the area that needs to be remediated, and then taking in account not only community wishes, but current landscape of land available. You know, Crowswoods, and Crowswoods was one nature area that we had from an open-space standpoint, and in the years since the gardens have opened, there are many other open green acre spaces that are available to the borough that might actually satisfy better. Have no idea, and don't really run and render an opinion on that, but just want to offer it out for the community to discuss.
Okay, and Sharon, I think you mentioned, you said, or somebody said $2.5 million the borough would have to spend.
Well, that's what we're budgeting for future...
Is that, that's over and above the grant?
No.
Yes, the first grant.
The first.
That is, that is the estimate cost from the engineers at this time, without the final knowledge of where it exists, to replace, to recap, put monitoring systems in, and put back dirt and grass at Crowswoods.
Grass seed.
Grass seed, correct. Outside.
Whatever grant you get won't cover that.
The grant we have now is to finish the delineation.
Right.
If we, the hope is, if we can get brownfields money, then we would be able to put, we would be able to go a step above that and put something else and put a better product back. What that final better product is, will be dependent upon our discussions with DEP and what they're looking for and what they're willing to pay for.
Okay, so the borough would commit $2.5 million to this project, over and above what the state gives you?
We're hoping that that's a maximum, but the grant funds are 75% of the project. So by getting the grant funds, we potentially can put a better product down there for less cost to the taxpayers.
Okay, I mean, that'd be a one-year budget item? Would that, like the $2.5 million, like would that place the road to the program?
That would be in capital. It would be bonded.
Okay.
But again, until we, if we, when you're dealing with landfills, you typically have to go through a specific portion of DEP that deals with landfills. Unless you're trying to do a redevelopment project through the brownfields, then you go through the brownfields. If, which is what we're trying to do, so that we get 75% funding. If we do the delineation and we go back in the brownfield, say, "We've changed our mind, this doesn't qualify for us," or "We don't have the funding available to fund you at this time, we funded a different project," then we would go back to the regular portion of DEP. of DEP and start a whole long permitting process to recap the landfill. At which point, we would fully be on the hook for all costs associated with that. Okay, I think I understand.
So Joan, I had responsibility for this when I was in charge of Public Works and I think sometimes you have to strike a balance of giving information, which I did, that we were pursuing two grants, which is all truthful, but, you know, I, I think that by releasing that on social media, and I quoted on social media from my borough site, this is a situation where we're putting the cart way before the horse of how come we didn't know about this? How come we didn't have public input? But how come we, like, there's a whole series of if, thens before you get from present state to a hypothetical future state that has a field or multiple fields there. And I think, to me, it's a little too premature. If I still have responsibility for Public Works, which I don't anymore, I would say it's a little bit too premature to even start discussing all the possible if, thens and factorial events that could happen in the future, you know, to have that someday be a workable field.
And meanwhile, they're still playing soccer there, correct? Okay, and they're still tilling the garden, they're still tilling the gardens and they're...
It's still business as usual. Yep, yeah.
Okay, and Frank, I know you're just in public safety now, but can you talk about what led to the policy change on the fire trucks that Chief Gorman mentioned about they're now, the EMS doesn't go out on fire calls, but now they go out on motor vehicle accidents?
That is new, relatively new information to me, and I can't speak intelligently to it, but I can either.
It's, it's best used of, of the vehicles. There's, it, it's a change in policy, but it's something we actually had done once upon a time. So each chief has a different view on how they want to respond to different things. And there was a long period of time where our ambulance would go to all fire calls and then we stopped that for a while because, again, thankfully, fortunately, most of our fire calls would not require their services. So, and it, it didn't stop. This way, they didn't have to go offline to responding to ambulance calls. So they are able to just respond to ambulance calls. Then for a while, they were going back on them. And it's a decision the chief has made using the staffing underneath him to the, to the best of their ability. There, there, again, the realization that there is very minimal need for them to be responding to fire calls and being able to respond, be available and able to respond to all ambulance calls. And then the, having the fire not respond to all ambulance calls like once upon a time they did at one point, which again was a misuse of, we don't necessarily need that, but there are some circumstances where it's helpful. Sometimes there, you may need a couple of extra folks to deal with certain situations so that you have a little more muscle power, things like that. So that's, it's, it's just the chief determining the best use of, of the resources.
Okay, I guess I was wondering if it had anything to do with the change in leadership at?
No, I think it's something that, that the chief just was leading towards as time changed.
And, and one thing I, I asked Chief to present, and because we switched systems two years ago, it's not easy to, to compile the information. So we're writing a report back from the state and what I asked for is basically a five-year histogram of response times, which we should be able to do that in probably the coming months. Chief said it should be coming like the next couple of months here. And we'll advertise that basically trying to draw a correlation between the investments that we've made with the stipend program, recruiting, some of the techniques that Chief has implemented and show the, the results that has had on response time in the borough of Haddonfield. So I would say hold tight for a couple of months on that and we'll be able to probably ask Joanna to put that in some sort of like pictographic and like a, you know, histogram of the last five years.
Okay, and then along with that, like there was a bigger, there's a bigger chunk of money going to the volunteer fire company this year under this budget, looks like?
Well, it's for a full year of the stipend program that started in May of 2024?
Correct.
So, right, this, so we have, this will be a full budget year worth of the stipend program.
Okay, so 2024 wasn't?
Well, it started in May of 2024.
Not where the borough was funding it.
Okay.
This, and it wasn't 24/7 before that.
Gotcha.
May of, May of 2024, we started 24/7.
All right, okay.
For, for fire stipend.
Okay. And sorry, I'm just, I'm jumping back and forth, back to kind of environmental. Did Sharon, Sharon, did you just say that, that, that you thought the county dredging project at Newton Creek was not successful?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay.
I was.
Just checking.
I was hopeful, again, nothing to do with the success or, or not success of the county project. As far as I'm aware, the county project was successful for what they were trying to achieve. I personally was hopeful that the dredging would, would provide a little relief in some of our storms because it might be able to hold some additional water. I haven't noticed a change in that, but again, severity of storms keeps increasing and, you know, more often. So it was wishful thinking on my part. It had nothing to do with the success of their project.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification.
Yeah, and, you know, I would say that when we had the storm, was it last year, Sharon, at night? It was, I think, eight minutes after high tide.
Yeah.
At, at peak high tide, so.
The July 4th one?
That was another one.
June, I think.
Yeah.
The 2019 one?
No, no, he's talking, he's talking about a storm that occurred last year. There was, there was a storm that occurred last year. We had concerns over whether or not it would be as, as have such, as significant an impact on the community as some of the previous storms. Again, because it depends on where the tide is. And i- if it's high tide, then the Cooper River cannot let out until the Delaware Bay. And so there's nowhere for that water to go. And as we said, everything then just backs up. And it was, it had, it was just starting to go out, so they were able to lower and we were fortunate enough that that water had someplace to go.
Have you been satisfied with the success of the underground storage tank at Homestead?
I, I would, I, I think.
I don't know, I mean, it's been a couple of years, right?
So they're changing.
Been about a year.
So that they're changing terminology. I would say that I think it's very successful for like, what has historically been called like a 25-year storm. It, it holds it and allows it to, you know, to drain slowly back into the water table and then downstream. I would say when you have those, I don't, I don't even know if they categorize it as a 50-year storm, but when you have those within an hour, you know, there's deluge of, you know, two or three inches of rain, whatever the case may be, and it's a high tide at, you know, Newton's Creek or, you know, at the Delaware River, it's just, there's no place for the water to go. And so all the containment, you, you would have to have, I don't know how big your containment system would have to be, but what we put in the ground there is not large enough to overcome 400 acres going into a deadhead at the outfall.
It helps a little bit.
It helps a little bit for 25 years and when it's a low tide.
Okay.
And in case you're wondering, because it's my area of work, the Delaware River has about an eight-foot tidal difference, you know, right there in Camden. So it's pretty significant. It's not a, yeah, it's not like a, you know, we're talking, we're not talking inches, we're talking feet.
Okay. And just one question on the trash vendor, is that a new vendor?
Yes.
And could, they, they had a significantly lower bid than the other two?
Yes, the other two, Waste Management increased their bid from the prior five-year round, five-year term, about 200 and some, about 216%, I believe it was.
And the, and in the, in the budget, the, that's categorized as trash removal, right? So.
It's under the public works.
It's in the public works.
So we were actually able to, there was a, because of the rate we received with the new vendor, we did not have a significant increase in that particular portion of the budget.
Okay, and recycling is listed somewhere else or, because you only have 645 for trash?
Correct. The trash is the only thing we were awarding. We weren't awarding anything else on that bid.
You're not, so.
We do.
Your public just does recycling?
We do recycle, we do all the other factors in-house. We put it out every five years so that we can evaluate whether it's cheaper to continue to do it in-house or to do it under contract.
Okay, so you're only awarding the trash part of that?
Correct.
Do we accept the pricing table for?
We accepted the full five years of the, of the pricing table for the new contract. No, we're, we're, we're only awarding the trash. The other ones, if we wanted to, we would have to go back out to bid for something if we wanted to look at that again.
And not everybody bid on all the different.
Correct, only the one company bid on everything.
Right.
Okay.
But just, just, I mean, just to take that a step further, had that new company not bid, we were looking at a 216% increase in trash collection. So that would have been significant, the tax increase we have now would have been significantly more if, or we would have considered taking, bringing it back in-house.
What does the tax increase equate to in dollars for the average house? You gave us the pennies, but the dollar per year.
Those four and two-thirds pennies. Do you, do you have a lot of questions on the budget?
I have a few, yeah.
All right, do you want to email me then? And then I can get you like exact figures instead of.
Okay.
Right now? I think we did that last year.
Yeah, yeah, email me.
Yeah, I think we did that last year and the year before, so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Yep, yep, I'll grab your, when they throw you out.
All right, thank you. Not seeing anyone online from the press. I'll make a motion to go into closed session and as a reminder, when we return, we will be retiring this session without any further action.
No action, no action.
Without any action. Yes, I just, second.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Commissioner Troy?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidel?
Aye. I used too many words to describe that one. Have a good night. All right, see you, thank you.
98.
98.
98.
I hope we know, we awarded it a couple of months ago.
Sorry.
Doesn't sound like.